First item, the mayor will bring in his budget in the five o'clock meeting. But at this point, item number one, Ms. Graham, what's going on with number one? Yeah, number one. Didn't you say we're going to carry it over? Any of these got suits or something?
Yeah, we're going to continue this. He had COVID.
Okay.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we're going to carry it over.
Okay. Okay, we'll do that. Item number two, Marcia's not here yet. Well, I guess you want to talk to her at five o'clock. It's just a review then. We'll talk about when she gets here. Item number three, Mr. Conway, you're here, I believe. And, uh... This is your commitment to the state?
Yeah, this, I think Brenda and I talked about this, but it was written a little bit differently than what it should have said. This is what is required of the City of Montgomery to be able to spend the rebuild Alabama funds. So we have to have a plan in place, which is typically our proposed paving. So the list or the streets that you have in front of you that's on the rebuild Alabama plan is the council district paving list proposed for 2022. Some of those are carryovers from 2021. We just want to make sure that they're all eligible, depending on how we get into that. You can probably see that the anticipated funds is like eight hundred and some odd thousand dollars. Our expenditures are much greater than that, but we want to be able to spend the rebuild Alabama funds on any of those projects that we have planned for 2022. And so that's what we need to pass as a body prior to the beginning of the fiscal year, which is to be the last meeting prior to the fiscal year. But we've done it the last two years at this meeting.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Conway?
Mr. Conway, I got a quick question. I know you are so ever complimentary to us when we call and we have a question or something like that. Like if one of these streets, I wanted to know like when the last time we paved it. Is that a record we kind of keep? Like, okay, I'll talk to you later about it.
Yeah, and any of these streets, like I say, they are proposed. We get them on this list so that they are on an approved list. But anytime we want to change, we can make those changes. We just have to have this passed as what we plan to do, and then we can make those changes after the list is published. Now, we may not be able to spend rebuild Alabama funds on it, but just as an example, if we have a $3 million paving plan and only $800,000 in rebuild Alabama funds, then we have a lot of flexibility in terms of what we apply that $800,000 to, and so we can move things around and make that work. So happy to talk with any of the nine council people to talk about whether or not these match their priorities. This list that you see was developed by our asphalt superintendent. These would be the ones that he has seen three-on-ones on. These are things that we have gotten into our office either from council people or from citizens who say, "These are streets that I would like to see paved." And then, of course, we have to financially constrain that to the number that we think we have available.
Okay, sounds good.
Chris, this is the first year we've gotten that money. How many years have we had?
This is, this will be the third, right?
Third year?
Is Betty in here? I think this will, coming up in 2022.
Second year?
No, this will be the third coming up.
Okay.
We've gotten for two.
Okay.
Yeah, we got it in 20 and 21.
Chris, does all these go through the grading? We, the machine runs and grades and determine who needs to be repaved?
Uh, yes, sir. So we did just complete that. Due to COVID, City Montgomery had to actually drive those streets themselves.
Okay.
And so the partner that we use, they actually ran them through their artificial intelligence algorithm. They're actually still in the process of that. Audrey and I have had that conversation several times about getting those numbers published. And as soon as we have those in hand, we'll kind of let you know where those things rank. And these would have been things that we had previously considered to be, you know, that would fall in that ranking system. When that comes in, we'll truth that and put that together to make sure.
Sounds good.
Any other questions? Okay, Chris, thank you. We'll both end the five o'clock meeting. You have any questions on this?
Oh, no, no, we'll talk to the sidebar.
The sidebar, okay. All right, number four. This is the one where you have them all come talk to you?
Yes, sir. We will have four today.
Okay.
With these apartment complex.
Okay. And then you, on number five, you got the same thing?
Same thing, yes, sir.
Okay. And then number six is the... We're talking a license, business license on cell phone rehab on Bon Flazero. We'll see what he says. Go ahead. Close him up. We need to close him up.
They don't have, they don't have a current business license.
They do not have one now?
No, sir. They do not. This is just authorizing them to go shut them down.
Well, we need to do a bunch of those then. Okay. Slow, slow, slow process, but we'll do it the way we have to done, whatever. Number seven, David Drive liquor license. I think that would be, that plans?
Number...
Number seven?
It is Calhoun. That's on the first page, on their first page. Second page.
We'll see when he gets in. There you go. There you go, okay. He did not approve it, okay? Read, he did not approve it. Read, no, okay. Number eight? Same thing, yeah?
Side by side.
Both of them?
Side by side.
Not approved, okay? Then number nine, we got Suda Tared Down. That's very small crowd, okay? And number 11, number 12? Abatements and anuses, okay?
We skipped number nine. Number nine is me. Spoke with the chief. We don't have any issues on number nine.
Okay, no issues.
Okay, that covers what we got on agenda. Now, we have two people want to speak to us. Dr. Bailey wants to talk to us about Lincoln Cemetery. Dr. Betty, will you come on up and talk to us about it?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
To the members of the council, appreciate the opportunity to come here this afternoon. As part of the rehabilitation effort on my part for Lincoln Cemetery, I'd like to request permission this afternoon to unveil two historic markers there and one gazebo I'd like to dedicate at Lincoln Cemetery, the city's oldest black cemetery.
For those of y'all don't know, Dr. Bailey, Dr. Bailey's a historian, one of the best ones in the city of Montgomery. He's done a great job of keeping up with history over the years, so. And Lincoln Cemetery, we've kind of controlled that over the years from the city council. Chris has money to rehab the, is that correct, Chris? The rehab program? All right. You have it, okay, Tom. And this situation here. Yeah, uh-huh. This is off Harrison-Harrison Road. It's really a closed cemetery. And for those of you who don't know about that, we've got 16 abandoned cemeteries in the city of Montgomery today. I believe that's all we got, Tom, if you had any more? 16? Yeah, that was the last number I saw. And Dr. Bailey's trying to, trying to help Lincoln be a better cemetery for the... Even though it's closed, if not, it doesn't accept any more burial, unless it's a very, very, very special occasion. Anyway, Dr. Bailey liked to have, liked to do that, and I think, I don't see any reason we can't let that happen. It's, uh... Have you talked to Sexton about that too? About the cemetery section? You're the vice Sexton, aren't you? Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
You, okay. Does anybody have any questions of what he wants to do? Is that okay? Is that okay with that? Okay. You've got our blessing.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Michelle Browder, you want to speak to us?
Good afternoon. Hello.
Good afternoon.
Can I approach to give you all?
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, there you go, there you go.
I'm here to, like, um, do what's about to take place here in Montgomery, Alabama. Um, and what are the few more weeks, I guess? September 24th is a private unveiling of a monument that will be erected literally a block and a half from the National Memorial for Peace and Justice. It's the Mothers of Gynecology, which will speak to the father of gynecology, which is J. Marion Sims, that's located at our state's capital. I am here to ask for support simply because we have literally raised over $200,000 from outside forces, Packer Foundation, Tara Health. We are speaking truth to the narrative of enslaved African women, the health disparities that has taken place through gynecological experiments. The rest of the country is very interested in this because they all now want to come to Montgomery next year for a conference, but they're also coming September 24th and 25th for a two-day conference. The mothers will be erected. They're, they stand about 15 feet tall. Nothing on this side of the western hemisphere has ever been done like this, and it's going to be in the heart of our city. We've had places like Morehouse and other colleges and educational institutions that want to come here and be a part of what is getting ready to take place in Montgomery, which is a narrative that will speak to healthcare disparities, the Crown Act, and of course, environmental injustice. And so we're hoping that we can get some support from the Montgomery City Council because of your return, your ROI is that young people from around the country are coming here to learn of this history, but they're also coming, doulas, midwives, medical practitioners, doctors, who now want to speak to the healthcare disparities. And Montgomery, Alabama is primed for that simply because this is where James Marion Sims, the first Negro hospital, sandwiched in between stamp and mama sack lunches. This is where the experimentations took place. It's a national conversation, and I'm not sure if you all are aware of this, but, you know, we have the lynching narrative, but now people are coming here to talk about this narrative because of COVID, what has happened with the exacerbating of medical experiments and the fact that these women were from Montgomery County, Tuskegee, Macon County, and Lawrence County. So I want to, number one, invite you to the unveiling. I think all of you have received the letter to show you what has been done. I think, thank you, Ms. Graham, for coming, Clay, Congressman, Councilman Clay, and Councilwoman, thank you all for coming. But I want to also invite you all to not only participate, but to support us in the effort.
Thank you, Michelle.
It is really something to see.
I've been up here, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that sneak peek was really, I mean, I was, I was just blown away by it. So I would encourage you all, if you haven't, you know, call Michelle and just ask, can you, you know, do a quick sneak peek? Just to, you know, let you really see what's coming, because it was really amazing. I was just amazed by it, and so I just, I think it's worth us spending a little time and just seeing what's coming in our city, because it is going to draw attention. But more importantly, we have to appreciate it first in order for us to appreciate those who are coming to appreciate it. So let's do that, yeah. Let's call her up and go by and see it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Michelle, Michelle.
And support.
Michelle, you have a card? You have a card with the phone number, is the phone number on it?
Uh, yes, it's on there, at the bottom.
At the bottom? 296?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, got it.
And can I also add that the support from this monument will go back towards the Montgomery Rescue Mission, thank you, say, under the Curtis Browder Ministries. We have five different organizations or programs that we serve. The home is the working poor, the formerly incarcerated. So this is a way for us to garner support, because we get no support from the city, that we don't have the government grants and things of that nature. So the funds from this entity will help us continue with our horse farm and some of the ongoing programs that we have in the city.
Very good, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed, you got, you want to talk about the ordinance we got in front of us?
Yeah. I had a town hall meeting last week, and I got more applause, Ronde and Cece was there, about the panhandling than, than anything else. It's something else. So someone sent me an ordinance for Savannah, and they don't dress panhandling. They talk about people impeding traffic. And so I'd like for us to form a committee or something, look at something we can do to get the people off the street, because it is going to be a hazard. I had a personal incident probably two weeks ago on Saturday going to Red Schoolhouse in Ramer, four or five deep in the left turn lane from Taylor Road to Troy Highway, and there's a guy with a bucket, five-gallon bucket, right in the middle. The 18-wheeler moves over and pushes him right in front of my car. Well, I, you know, I stopped, I could, you know, I saw him, but I'm thinking, man, if you're looking down, you'd run all over him. So we got to get him out of the traffic, and we got to figure a way to do it. You know, I don't know, I don't know the answer, but we need to, we need to be looking at it, Charlie.
Savannah, Georgia did this as an ordinance to...
Sir?
As a transportation or a hazard that way.
Yeah, we needed, we needed, not as a panhandling, but more of as a... Impeding the flow of the traffic and a hazard to the people.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, I'll form a committee at the, at the five o'clock meeting.
Sounds like a winner. Thank you, sir.
Which I think you want to be chairman.
Oh, great.
I'll be working on the other two shortly. Okay. Anybody else have anything to bring up at this time?
Charlie, I know we talked about it last week about those businesses that we're running into that don't have business license. I just want to see where was the council on enforcing or closing those businesses now? Where are we? Because we're, in those businesses?
Well, I think we need to ask Mr. Bevel. Apparently, there's been a lot of research since we had last meeting about how many folks we do have in this scenario. If y'all want to talk about it? Let's talk about, let's talk about that. I think it's, uh, if you get hit the newspaper, and we didn't, weren't expecting to be a thousand businesses that didn't have a business license, and I'm surprised, I'm sure y'all were too. But I'm understanding you've done some research, so tell us what you've done, okay?
Okay, for some of the apartment complexes, for example, that are in question on the meeting tonight, we have had contact from all four. Now, two of the first two, we're looking at Liberty Square and Bridgecroft Apartments. Those two are licensed. So with respect to licensing, those two have a 2021 current. The latter two, the formerly known as the Red Lion Apartments, which is now Kensington, and I found out it's about to change to Eden Plate Apartments, under the same ownership. In addition to the Villas at the Cur, which is Beaumont Reserve at Eastern. I've spoken to both of the management companies slash ownership, and they have applied with city inspections to start the process for their certificates of occupancy, which is something that we require in order to continue the licensing process. So we've heard from numerous. I've actually gone and doorknocked and spoken with management, and they have relatively new managers out there that were unaware that the issues were actually going on. For example, Red Lion, that manager's only been up there two months, but she was able to provide us with information to contact property management and/or ownership. So we're in the process, they're responding to our citations.
So they're, 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 at this point, they're operating without a business license, right?
They are continuing to operate. However, we've made certain that they're aware that there are certain provisions beyond going necessarily being fined and penalized. Because the only thing that we, the only teeth that we've been utilizing is the citation, which says that it gives them a certain amount of time to respond. And if they don't, then they're cited $500. That's per our ordinance and per law. Now, in the revenue department, the revenue manager has forwarded information to the city attorney with respect to some provisions in our ordinance, specifically ordinance to us, let's see, 16, chapter 16, article 2, section 1639, subsection M, as in Mary, to be exact. And that gives us a little teeth in terms of being able to place a lien, perhaps, on personal as well as real property. Now, if that's something that is deemed to be something that we can do, of course, as these people are flipping these properties, as we all know, there's a cloud on a title, and it goes before a title search type situation at closing, then that will prevent the sale or the flip of these properties. And so when I mentioned kind of sort of these to the, some of the ownership, I heard from them. And we received verification actually from the inspections department that, yes, they've applied for certificate of occupancy. So that's something that I see.
How much would a business license cost for one of these apartment complexes?
They can, it's depending, of course, on their gross receipts. I got information today that gross receipts on one was over a million, a million, 1.3 million. And so something like that could range anywhere from $2,300 to $3,000.
Okay.
It's just depending on what their gross receipts are.
I understand that. Now that all this stuff is exposed, I understand we found a thousand of these. Anybody know about that?
Well, it's not necessarily that we found a thousand. We have an area that's called Area 9, where there needs to be a lot of... And we, this is a work in process, cleanup in our particular system with respect to businesses that are no longer operating within the city of Montgomery. We have businesses that have submitted information that they're closed. So those things have to be closed out to be, to get an accurate count, if you will, of what's actually operating. Now, within the city limits, we have our revenue examiners that are assigned areas 1 through 6, and they're more able to discover businesses that are not licensed or businesses that are closed, because right now they're going out. For Area 9, which would include businesses that are out of state or operating maybe from home, where you may have a home office or something, or online sales. So we're having to send out extra notices, hoping that they will respond. If they don't, if we get a piece of return mail, then that lets us know something's going on with that business, that person's no longer in that particular space. So then that gives us the authority to go ahead and close out those accounts. So that's what we're working on right now, our due diligence is with respect to skip tracing and so forth.
So let me, let me, let me understand, I'm a little slow. Area 9 of your business license, of people that don't have a physical address or don't fit another category, they're on, and all these thousands that were reported to the news media that shocked all of us when we got that shocking news. I mean, news media, I want to make sure the news media gets the exact answer today, because when they go to the newspaper and bar and WSFA pixel and all this stuff, then we have the accurate number that these people are possibly not regular businesses. They probably could be closed or whatever, and they're in a whole different district. They're not one you walk up and knock on the front door. Is that correct?
They don't have a physical location. They're located outside of Montgomery, out of state.
They could be, they could be a business delivering to Montgomery from, say, Birmingham or Agglacic or Tallahassee or whatever. It could be delivered to us, okay?
And understand with the, with the pandemic and everything, especially within the past year prior to, we had a lot of online sales businesses that opened up. They would be considered to be no physical locations well. Now, some of those have, of course, disappeared because as people are going back to work, to a physical location, if the business didn't do as well, they've abandoned that business. So we're going through right now that individual's paperwork, if you will, to find out if this person's still at this address. We're getting responses actually from people, please close out my business license account.
I've got, I got two questions. How much money are we talking about in this, this Area 9?
To be perfectly honest, we don't have an exact figure tonight, but I can tell you that Area 9 is one of the largest areas of activity and revenue in our department.
Okay, second question. Do we have something we put in, just say if Ed Grimes had a business, I didn't pay it, that when I come back four years from now, you're going to get my money before you let me open, or not allow me to open a business?
Yes, we're in the process right now of even taking a look, making sure that we're within, and working with the legal department, of course, making sure we're operating within the realm of the law, state law in our ordinances, on the way, the information that's obtained on the application. Making sure that applications are not being left with blanks left, you know, open and so forth, that we get contact information. In our ordinance, it says, I think we have to have three references. We're making sure that that's happening now, because in the end, at the end of the day, when these businesses skip, is what we call, they go missing, you can't find the owners or what have you, those are tools that we can use to locate these people. We're also looking into, it's in discussion amongst, in our department right now, of pulling soft credit CRs, we call them credit reports, CRs, to locate people, especially sole proprietorships and LLCs. So that when they go, even if they want to go to the city of Auburn, for example, Auburn may actually check those things. And if something is out there that you left owing the city of Montgomery, then you will not be allowed to obtain a license in Auburn to conduct business until you've cured what's owed to the city of Montgomery.
That's good.
That's good.
And I have, I have one question too, real quick. I know you spoke about if they are behind, then we can go through the legal department, turn it over to them, and then they can be a lien placed. How, my question is, how far behind or how many months in a year do they have to be before we get to that place? Does the ordinance actually say, or is it just based off if you catch them?
The ordinance, in that same particular chapter, section, and article, it outlines, actually quotes state law, verbatim, actually. It outlines some of the mechanisms that can be used, and they have them itemized, A through... My particular copy has A through L. So in those, we're looking, we know what we already do, so, and we've already done. So it takes us to the step now with the approval of city council that, yes, we can, we can contact the county. The county has furnished us with a template of how to file for a lien at no charge. The only charge the city would incur would be if we release a lien. And of course, then the ordinance allows us, in this particular statute of law, let's see, I had it written down here. Excuse me, it's Code of Alabama 40, chapter 42, A-11. It allows us to recoup. What's, if you want the lien released, you pay what you owe, and then you pay, I think it's $8.50 to the county to release the lien.
Who is the collector? Who goes and collects that money?
Uh, it would be the revenue examiners. It would be compliance officers, even auditors are involved. So pretty much our whole department, outside of the initial clerks that you see when you come into the department, are involved in the collections process.
Who puts, who puts the lien on? Legal? Does legal put the lien on?
Also, we're doing a, especially some...
Okay, so...
We got one on the, on the agenda today that we're going to suspend his... He doesn't have a license, okay? Now, how long has he been running without a license? And now we, we're going to take this, we're going to close him up, I guess what we're going to do, because he can't, he can't operate without a license. Well, he's been on this, he's on the agenda, so how long has he been? When did we catch him? And how long has he been operating? Have we gotten?
Well, it would be depending on this particular one, let's see, since 20, since 2020, I believe.
Yeah.
Is that the one?
I just see it. Y'all brought it to us today.
Which, which, which one specifically?
This is a cell phone rehab on Bon Flazero Road.
Okay, I'll let you know.
All right, cell phone rehab was brought to my attention. We did an audit on that. Turned out the state had done an audit a couple of years ago, which we, he backed off the state's audit and did an assessment, included the license fees as part of our audit assessment.
But he never renewed his license?
Never renewed the license, no.
But that, and his renewal was January, he should have renewed his license, so we're now in August closing him up. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Correct. Okay.
Well, I got one last question. What, what's the rate? I mean, you said a million bucks revenue, and they're going to pay $2,300. Is it a half percent? Tell, tell me what, what kind of, what kind of rate are we basing that off gross incomes?
Every business has a different one.
Is it a tier?
It is.
It is a tier. It is a tier for apartment communities. And it's going to be, it's going to vary depending on the type of business we're speaking. But if we're speaking of the apartment communities, then it is on a tier. And with, you know, between this level and this level, so.
Are we competitive with other cities?
I would say that we are. Other cities have flat rates for the majority of their licenses, whereas we, we generate income.
Okay.
Beyond a flat rate on, on many of our businesses.
Wait, wait, you know, we did, we, Ed, we did a upgrade of those, of those rates about 10 years ago, or maybe 12 years ago.
2009, I believe, for us.
Huh?
It was in 2000.
2009, okay. It was been, yeah. And, and we did bring them in line, as, as professional rates, I think still a little bit out of line of what, like, travel would charge or we tumpa charges. There's some difference in those things. We, we, we're close, but we probably time to look at them again.
Okay.
10, 12 years, that's, that's a long time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take a break. Be back at five o'clock.